Apparently, I don't even know what day it is according to Steve.
I'm not sure.
Yeah. I'm just gonna keep my mouth closed because I'm just so busy.
I would like to find the meeting. I never got to interview.
I'm sure you get confused.
Uh, and Steve with Prossman and Steve Gerhardt.
The first started on time. Also at this point.
Hi, we're straight up to our key. Please give me a message. Thank you.
I'm trying to get into the meeting. This is Vince. I have no audio, but I have a video.
Right here.
Hey Vince, can you hear us?
You hear?
Okay, you were on, we were on mute, so, uh...
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
Okay, you can...
Okay, sounds great. Yeah. I hear you. But here's the problem.
That's gonna be bothersome. Um, did I speak? I'm not allowed to speak.
And we're not, you're telling us you have to do it this way, and I'm against that. You know, I thought there could be a danger.
What are you talking today about? I know it's... She's a bitch. I really feel about it.
Did you ever sort of...
We're supposed to go into every second. I've been on the phone trying to get ahold of the small group party. I haven't received it.
You ever talk to Patty about it?
I haven't. I have to. I've been busy making things for me.
Oh, yes.
You're saying it's cutting.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and call our City of King City Special City Council Meeting on November tenth, twenty twenty-five, at eleven thirty to order, eleven thirty-six. Um, let's go ahead and do roll call. Uh, Councilor Ardidi.
Here.
Councilor Olson.
Here.
Councilor Gerhardt.
Yeah.
Councilor Cunningham. Council President Braverman.
I'm here.
Councilor Tasso.
And Mayor Kavinsky, here.
With everybody in different spots. Okay, at this time, if you are willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get going with our only agenda item, we will, um, open forum to ensure community has an opportunity to provide input for items being considered on the agenda or make suggestions for future agendas. This time, the council will be happy to receive your comments pertaining to items on the agenda. Um, each person's time will be limited to three minutes. I'm gonna bump that up to five minutes because we don't have many of you here today, and if you have stuff you'd like to share with us, we're happy to listen. Did we have anybody sign up, or just raise a hand, or you're just here to watch?
That's a question. So, I'm Ray Russell, Governor of the... I would like to know what the current status is with Kurt and two senators and from the representative of, uh, the King City Post Office.
Okay, um, we don't have that on the agenda for today, but that's a great question and something maybe we can add for an update, uh, next week, update on Post Office. Any further comment? Is anyone manning the online? I will go check.
Go look at it.
If you are viewing online and you would like to make open comments.
I can tell you about that. Sorry, I bet you don't want me to whisper in your ear.
He said we were ready to go, yeah. Uh, okay. There is nothing further. We will go ahead and close open forum.
Karen's gonna miss.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to unfinished business, we have none, so we will begin our new business, um, where we will receive an update from Prossman regarding city manager recruitment and possible selection of candidates to move forward to the next phase. We'll turn it over to you, Steve. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And thank you all for being here. Um, I'm Steve Worthington.
Speak up, please. I can't hear you.
Sorry, Vince, hold on one second.
I've translated this within certain...
Microphone.
So now the mic's a little closer. Can you hear me better now?
Yep.
Perfect.
All right, very good. Um, so, um, and I was just introducing myself. My name is Steve, Steve Worthington. Have, uh, now at this stage in the recruitment, we, uh, reached our first review date. In total, we've had twenty-two applications. Of those twenty-two, I believe I've interviewed ten for interview, and I completed the last interview this morning at ten a.m. Um, and so, um, this is a fresh list, uh, and, uh, and all. Um, the, uh, we'll go through the list here. Uh, we'll talk about, uh, the candidates that I've interviewed. I'll present some information, uh, too about that. Uh, because we are in an open forum, it's a different, uh, presentation than I would give in an executive session, and there's some very good reasons why that is the case. The primary reason is these candidates often, in almost all cases, but, uh, often are relying on... Their employees likely don't know the... And it's not... Space. Usually, you would be public about the search a little later in the process, after you've had a chance to identify. They've had a chance to consider if they want to proceed in the process, but it's a two-way decision, of course, and if they decide to proceed, they have an opportunity to tell their employer. None of that has happened. This is the first time you're going to hear about them. This is the first time they're going to, uh, be a serious candidate as well, and that some of this needs to take place, uh, generally in pu- in private. Um, the law provides for that, but we need to check a few boxes on the way, and that isn't what happens. So, we're public today. But to still provide an opportunity, a chance for these people to make their own decisions if they want to be known by the public, and they're serious enough about this, uh, application. Uh, we're using pseudonyms.
I've gone through and...
Randomly made up.
Names.
Do not exist in this application process and assign them to each... I've done my best to see that we use gender neutral names, and I'm also going to do my best to describe the candidates verbally as though they're all female. They are not all female, but neither are they all male. So, uh, those are all things just to sort of even the playing field and allow us to talk about the candidates without getting into the details of their name. We've had to take, I've had to take a few other somewhat extraordinary, uh, uh, steps as well, because if I'm too specific about an employer, often these people work on a one-job title for the one, for that employer. And if I say their job title and the employer, it's easy to make a, a quick, draw a quick line to who that is. So, I've also obscured the employer. I have, uh, referenced the employer, uh, for these candidates by the size of the city or organization they work in. Uh, so, I've, I'm gonna use the terms small, medium, large. I've characterized some of those. I also talk about regional. Regional would be... Say it's in, I might say it's in Oregon. If there's enough small cities or other cities in Oregon, it would seem as though to provide some chance for that person not to do it. If their situations are so unique, I will pull it back to say that it's a regional government, or it's a western state government, because the specifics are such that if I drill much down any lower, uh, I accidentally identified or could identify who that person is. So, it's a little different. It's gonna be creative, but I think at the end of the day, you'll get a sense of who these candidates are, what they're doing. Ultimately, we would like you to make a decision about who you wish to invite to final interviews, and I'm trying to recall if we...
No, we didn't...
First week of December.
Yeah, we're doing first week in December, but I don't think we had decided on an actual date yet, right? But first week of December.
First week is December. Okay. All right, well, hopefully we will have a, a date soon, because, uh, we'll all need to be thinking arrangements for that.
And some of your candidates are in trouble, right?
So, the sooner that happens, uh, the more likely the cost will be, uh, uh, there'll be less to use to happen traveling. Um, so, back to where I was, um, that's, uh, in front of us for having you select who you wish to invite. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, here in the next hour and a half, we'd like to be able to get to that point. It'll be challenging, but I think you can get there. Uh, the, um, the question will be how many people to invite. So, some things have, uh, come out in the, in the ord- in the, uh, research or research, but in this process, uh, so, you may or may not be aware, Oregon provides special, uh, incentive, uh, to recognize the contribution that veterans in this state have made. And so, if you're a veteran, it meeting a certain criteria, you get extra points in a search or the hiring process such as this. You get extra qualification, qualifying factors. Uh, you have two veterans. Uh, we have gone through what I believe is the appropriate process to give them the additional status that they have in the search. In this type of search, where we are with that, it essentially, if those veterans meet minimum qualifications, which I believe both do, in that situation, they are, uh, it would be very difficult for you not to invite them to a final interview. I, I won't say it's impossible. That's upused. But in the various cities and counties in this state that I've worked in, almost all subscribe to the position that if they're qualified, meet minimums, they're a veteran, they get moved to the final process, final interview process. So, that means you already have two candidates most likely that you will want to invite. You probably will want to invite some more candidates. So, because of that, I'm going to suggest you invite five to the final interview, so it'll have an array of choices. So, this might be a good chance just to sort of pause if there's any questions about this. Sure, yes.
So, I, I know you're very thorough, so please don't take offense by this question, but what steps do you take to verify that somebody is a veteran?
You bet. And it's a good question. So, they need to provide us with a, uh, I'll get my numbers...
The A and P part, yes?
That's exactly right. And they need to provide us with a, a statement saying when they served and that they are claiming veteran status. If they have those documents and they look like they're appropriate documents, we accept them. Don't drill down to figure out who signed it when and if it is exactly accurate. I can't, I have no way to actually certify, but I have a way to look at it, and I've seen enough of these. My team, our team, has seen enough of them. You look at it, oh, that, that one looks real. It's good. I have almost never seen a false one, almost never. So, but that's a good question, and that's, that's the process.
I assume all of the candidates meet the minimum qualifications, but what are the minimum qualifications?
Yeah, so, uh, the minimum qualifications advertise for four-year government's experience, uh, a bachelor's degree, and, uh, and then it talks about some other qualifications that were desirable. But that is the minimum qualifications. And while we're on minimum qualifications, there's a little bit of a disconnect between your job description and the four-year requirement. Your job description talks, uh, specifies a six-year. We advertised a four-year, and it got published at four years. So, I have used four years at a minimum. It's the, it's the least restrictive. Your job description knows in, the two are in conflict. It's an opportunity to bring that out, and this is it, so, yeah.
So, how many applicants were there total?
Twenty-two.
So, eight passed the test.
Yes, eight made minimums, and, uh, uh, there was, yeah, I'm trying to remember in the search, excuse me, with a couple of, some were late coming, as if, for example, this was a...
Application in, in today.
Uh, it's too late to interject candidate, so I'd put that person aside. Um, they did not reach the same level of experience on paper they've seen with other candidates. Uh, but to interrupt the process for a late-coming application, it isn't worth that disruption, and I eventually do have to stop. And so, I, I, I say as long as it's practical to add someone, and to me, that practical limit was last, end of last week, but, uh, so, it's an example. Twenty, twenty-two applied, twenty-one really fully considered. There might have been actually a second one that came in, uh, late. And, yeah, so, I, I think I described how I, what that process is like.
Oh, we had a person in here, sorry.
Um... Did it come up in the interview process, um, are the candidates aware of, uh, recent history and turmoil, so to speak, of King City and, uh...
So, uh, yeah, it, and so, in the process, you know, I certainly didn't describe it as turmoil, but what I did describe it as was the council has a dynamic relation among itself, and there are, you know, some of the council members have conflict, and that's the nature of this work. And absolutely, I drilled down on that, and the people that rose to the top had some opportunity to explain how they deal with conflict to me. And I mean conflict to help people work through that to come to a productive outcome, so...
I apologize, Steve. You had said when you opened that you had twenty-two applicants and ten selected, but there's only eight on your sheet.
Sure.
What happened to the other two?
So, one of them withdrew. Um, they, uh, uh, they were a qualified candidate. They did well. Uh, I rated them well, but as they progressed through the process, two things struck out, stood, stood out to them. One, you're not purged. Organizing purged was important to them, and two, the nature of this process, just that, put a little bit of an edge risk at this, and they decided it just wasn't worth moving forward. So, they withdrew. I won't be talking about them beyond what I just said, and I, I probably recalled the number wrong, because I think it might be twenty-one and not twenty-two.
Okay, but you said ten, so that means nine were selected, but we only have eight, and then, so did somebody else drop off, or...
So, um, I had, um, yeah, I had nine. You have eight now, uh, and there were, uh, twelve that I didn't invite to interview that didn't meet minimums then, so...
So, you, you selected eight from the twelve?
Selected nine from the twenty-two. One of them withdrew, so you don't see that person.
Okay, all right, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Question? Were any candidates...
Can you repeat that?
We couldn't hear you.
Were any of these, let me make sure I'm on. Were any of these candidates, was land use background part of your criteria for the selection of the final eight?
So, the criteria that were used is, and I'm sorry, we don't, uh, I, I didn't, uh, I, I... So, let me do it this way. Well, I could just drop you, didn't I? I have my, I mean, accidentally, my GPS app is still running, and it wants to talk to me, and that's just gonna be a confusion. So, okay. Um, the things that, uh, I inquired about were, was their experience, uh, and this is on a sheet of paper that, uh, the councilors have, and there's also a few sheets available for the audience here, and this is, uh, this piece is public. Um, the things listed in this sheet is, uh, uh, the size of their budget, uh, the number of FTEs they've had, the number of direct, the largest number of direct reports they've had, relevant years... Why they are interested in King City, experience working or living in small communities, leadership and team members' chance to demonstrate or explain that, how they approach to budgeting for a city, uh, their, uh, how they... Uh, of, uh, city manager, also how they deal with council, uh, and mayor relations in a couple of different questions, and then how they communicate and build relationships. Uh, and then work in economic development, which is about as close as... Specifically about land use, but economic development touches on that subject, and then also how they communicate with staff. We discussed, uh, you'll hear about their strengths, areas that they see that they would like to do some self-improvement in, uh, an idea about how long at a minimum they see themselves in the position, and then you get some information about... A likelihood for being successful in the first two years. So, those are the comments you're gonna hear from each one, and that was kind of the nature of the questions that I had as well, Councilor.
So, when you interviewed us, um, and I, I can't speak for myself, because I haven't talked to my colleagues, I'm not allowed to, um, about what they said, but I know one of the things that was important to me was finding the person who shared the same philosophy that the city council, I believe, is standing for right now. And that is the city council would like to follow our municipal code and have the ability to manage city manager. Instead of being managed by the city manager.
Right.
Um, and I never saw any of that, or any of the things that you and I talked about, um, you put out there.
Right.
So, how do we know that any of these eight candidates that you've selected understand and kind of, kind of adopt that kind of philosophy?
Yeah, so, um, I, I did hear you and, and the rest of you, and I think generally speaking, that is shared, uh, by the, I'm just affirming what you just said about that shared philosophy. I don't wanna, not quoting about special words, but still. Um, so, you, where you see that is where I rank them. So, as we get into the ranking, you sense the, the candidates that were essentially, Councilor, what you're saying is they should be doing what all requires them to do. Uh, and some people have demonstrated that they do that, and, and of course, their work or their understanding, and others have demonstrated they may, may not necessarily subscribe to that philosophy. So, you're gonna see some differences, those about both their set of experiences and then also my sense of how they would fit in, in the community on this issue.
Because that's not much money that we've invested in this process. It would be really upsetting, um, to, uh, since we're not able to even know their names or talk to them directly. It would be very upsetting, Steve.
I'm just letting, I'm, you know, I put it out there, whether you like it or not.
Um, I, it would be very upsetting to have a candidate who has, does not subscribe to that philosophy and will put us back to where we started from when we embarked on this kind of step to try to really turn things around for King City. Um, and again, you know, I may be speaking out of turn here, but it is very important that we find the right person who is not gonna usurp their power. So, whatever you could do to speak to us and steer us into those right candidates, that would be helpful.
Oh, yeah, well, thank you. I'll do my best, and you can, um, ultimately, those that you select, you're going to know, you're gonna see their materials, you're gonna know their name. We're going to be able to move into a, uh, a much more complete review, but because of the details of these circumstances, I just can't quite get there. Yeah, but I can tell you what my opinion is, as long as I don't, in my view, uh, uh, devolve, do, do something to identify them individually.
Well, one quick question, and I don't know if this applies at all, but I was talking to some people and, and a fear we have is that, um, we would, we would interview people, and we would find, oh, yeah, yeah, we really, really like that particular individual. And then come to find out later, something comes up in a background check or something, and, oh my God, there you go. So, we waste it all our time. Your process, does it alleviate that fear?
So, there can always be surprises in any process. Are you gonna be absolutely assured that there won't be a surprise? No, I can't do that. But what I can do, what I have done, is, uh, we've done a, a news, we call it a Google search, to see, you know, what the press has to say about them. Um, we don't get into social media because it's just too subjective. We just don't care, but we do have done a search on newspaper articles, and so, I have some idea what's in the press, uh, about individuals, and so you have some sense of history. I ask them in the course of the interview, the first interview, is there something in your background I should share with the council, so they can... So, if there's something, there's a chance to disclose that, and some of your candidates have been forthright. All of your candidates have probably been forthright. One or two have disclosed a little something. I don't want to get into that today, uh, but, uh, I can. Um, and then we've, uh, we see a few things in the press, and then finally, before you actually meet them in a first in-person interview, we will do a background check, and we'll have references from them. The background check will verify their degree, show a driving record, show some other details about them. We don't go there yet, uh, until we know that they want to participate and you have an interest in, in knowing more about them. Uh, the references, we ask each candidate to provide at least three references from peers, three from subordinates, and three from supervisors, and so we bring those to you, and I'll tell you now, not everybody can do that, and which is to say, and I probably need to rephrase it. What picks them away is the candidate providing the names, the contact information. Not everyone ha- takes the time to respond in what limited time we have, so, I might ask for three, but we get one or two, and that's very common. But you'll get some sense of, of their background from those sources. So, when you sit down to meet them, in, in that long interview day, you will get all the written materials and the references, which are competent, uh, and the background for, report, which is confidential to you too.
And will know their real names then, and nobody will be wearing a disguise or anything?
Right, no, no more pseudonyms after this. So, I'm, I'm running out of them, so...
I have a question on that timeline. Um, so, if we move forward to five candidates today, um, immediately the background and reference begins for the...
This begins, but it doesn't necessarily, so, the references and background check.
Um, it'll take, it's like the candidate to get invited. They immediately decide if they want to participate. If they say, yes, I want to participate...
Is there a deadline for that piece, so that we can decide whether or not we want to invite another candidate?
Oh, uh, you can have backup candidates if you wish, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's what I mean, like, are you gonna reach out to these five candidates today, tomorrow, and then give them like a day or two to tell us so that we can kind of...
Essentially, yes, and then it takes them two or three days to fill out all the paperwork.
Right.
A number of legal disclosures they need to do, so we can go ahead and check the background, whether or not I have any good questions to offer to you, so...
Okay, and then if there is something that pops up in their background that we don't prefer, will we still have time to invite another candidate?
Probably by the time you see that, you're gonna be deep in the process.
Okay.
So, uh, if we saw something extraordinary, um, let's say that just, you know, there was some sort of felony criminal conviction, we would say, wait, need to talk with the client about this, so...
Are you done with your question? What is the dropout rate that you're seeing as the...
What is the...
Dropout rate?
Oh, um, usually we'll lose ten to twenty percent, uh, but that happens in the first week. It doesn't really happen later in the process. It happens on the front end. And, uh, and all, we're, if you select five, I'll tell you, you're sort of guaranteed you'll lose one, not through anybody's fault, it's just the odds.
So, twenty percent?
So, I understand, I mean, obviously, um, I'm a very pro-veteran person, but I am concerned, we, we had a prior...
State your concern, forward-looking.
Do you have concern forward-looking?
Um, well, I do. I would just like to say that if we're gonna have to invite two because they're veterans, maybe we could have more than five candidates. Could we have six?
You know, uh, it's possible. I think... You know, uh, it's possible. I think you could certainly have an alternate, um, that if you have an opening, um, you could, we can potentially run a process with six. It will be probably a day of your work that will be three hours. You'll, you'll have a, most likely a ten-hour day. Uh, and that's starting at eight a.m. till roughly six, so.
Can we spread it over two days? We have to do it in one day?
Um, we really encourage a single day. So, um, the, the process will, I think, bear fruit better for you if it's a single day, just because you can see everyone at the same time, share that experience together and, and not lose, uh...
When you're in the same frame of mind, I think is what Steve's trying to say. Most hiring processes that get to the final interview are done at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
And then we would have, and we'd want a lot for our one community night.
Exactly.
In minutes.
Mm-hmm. Right. We're assuming there's a reception, for example, or some other...
Or an alternate. I like having alternates. I mean, we do that in jury selection. We actually have two alternates, just in case, um, running on top of my mind, and we have two alternates just in case, just to answer Gierhart's question, like if somebody has a background issue, then we don't have to start over.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't know. What do you think about having two alternates?
I bet.
As an alternative to a ten-hour day.
So, yeah. And, and it's not a, uh, it's a, it's a rather full, uh, active day too, so. Um, but I do, I do want enough time, I wanna make sure you have enough time for the candidates as well.
Yeah.
So, uh, if, uh, there's nothing further, we can start into our discussion about...
Mayor, can I just go, it's about twelve oh five and have about, a ten-minute little bit of instruction on, um, appropriate interview questions, the dos and don'ts of interviewing. I think it's very helpful. About five minutes potentially per candidate, unless the meeting runs over. I'm gonna check that out. I don't know.
Okay, great. Well, we're gonna start with Quinn Morgan. Quinn is a veteran, uh...
I'll, uh, I'll go through the materials.
The other ones will be even quicker. Um, the first ones usually takes a little, little longer. Uh, largest budget responsibility, uh, what, largest budget responsibility, $2 billion. Uh, annual capital program of about $300 million. Largest number of, of FTEs, roughly a hundred to eleven thou, eleven hundred, hundred to eleven hundred. Largest band of control, seven direct reports. Um, twenty years in local government across, uh, city and county and special purpose district roles, capital finance manager at a large regional, um, uh, western state transit agency, give or take forty-five hundred employees in that agency. Uh, program manager at a large city government in Pacific Northwest, uh, ninety hundred, uh, ninety-eight hundred employees, uh, has experience with county government with a scale of about, uh, 3,000 employees. Uh, private sector, uh, chief operating officer as well, and a BA in leadership and executive MBA as well. Uh, Quinn is a veteran, veteran qualified. Uh, yeah, she has personal roots in the area, uh...
Watched the strength in...
...of protecting county's character during, uh, during, and during client growth. Um, motivated by visible relationship driven by service, he says, he says. Fifteen years living in, uh, nearby small city as well, uh, family in the area, um, is familiar with , uh, some of the HOAs associated with, uh, the area. Um, and, uh, grew up in the area as well, and worked in a mom-and-pop business environment nearby as, uh, they were going to school.
I have a question. I find myself frantically trying to write stuff down. Is any of this able to be just provided for us to look at while you're going through it?
I leave that to the city attorney. I don't have...
I can show my notes.
I mean, I'm writing notes, but I'm trying to like listen and write.
Yeah, it's, it's good work.
Like the...
Yeah. So I don't have some printing, I would need to...
Would it be anonymous?
I'm still editing as I'm reading.
Okay. It's a dynamic process.
Is it something that we could see after we're all done today? Email to us maybe?
Would, and he would definitely be making the decision.
Um...
Yeah, that's true.
I have a question that, that, that's just come up as you've talked about this person. Are we hiring, are we excluding people that live in this, in King City proper?
I don't think so.
Okay.
There's nothing indicated that I've seen that requires residency.
No. You don't have to be a resident to be the city manager.
But we're not excluding residents?
No.
Okay.
Just, just...
Checking.
You have some residents, but as a, most, most often the case, uh, not too many of the residents carry the credentials that are going to meet minimum requirements, so. Uh, some may though. So, let's see, um...
Uh, I cannot write that past, and we'll be able to read my script. So are we making a decision today? Or do we wait till we receive a spreadsheet?
I think the intention is for you to make a decision today about who you invite. But I do wanna point out, you want, it's a, you, you, all here is to select five, or six, or seven from eight. So it's not so much who you invite, it's more about who you don't invite. And it's a little easier to think about from that perspective. And what you see here is my ranking of these candidates. So there'll be a difference between candidate number one and candidate number eight that almost anyone can see.
These are your rankings? Like, do you have them in order of your preference? I mean, I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either. Thank you.
Does anybody know that?
No, it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot. I didn't know they were ranked on...
Oh, no, he said, he said that.
No, he did, but I didn't know what that meant. It, it, it wasn't clear that he had ranked them on the paper.
Uh, just, uh, was, was one of the things I was doing right when I got done at ten o'clock. Uh, so, um, yeah.
What, can I ask what goes into these rankings? Like, do you have a point system for like experience, um, that we can...
So, while I do use numbers to help me in my ranking, it is subjective. It is not a situation where if they mention a certain word six times, they get twelve points.
Right. Okay.
So I might do that. Uh, but this is very subjective, but it's based in my experience as a city manager, uh, forty years in local government, and, uh, you know, ten, over ten years in the...
And do you use an algorithm?
Really?
Do you scan your reservations through, and use an algorithm to rank people?
Oh, I do. Uh, so...
Yeah, I agree with Dan.
Okay. Continue. Thank you.
Wes. So, this one is fairly detailed, and, and it is where we get...
Sorry, Steve, can I pause? Councillor, do you have a question?
Uh, are you able to give us the ages of these applicants?
Absolutely not.
No.
Not on an area I can comment on or even suggest.
You should've done the interview questions first.
Uh, let's see. Um, approach to budgeting. Hands-on fiscal manager, develops, uh, budget narratives, enforces appropriate discipline, conducts a FPNA analysis, really, uh, long-range modeling, um, and a twenty-year outlook. They're using a rolling budget, looking at twenty years ahead to project what their needs are going to be. It's a very detailed file. Uh, not everyone does that. Not everyone's capable of that. Models, uh, operation and maintenance costs for capital projects, manages grants, and if the local agreements, uh, educates staff in on-budget compliance. Um, this person is comfortable as a, a public-facing manager, proposes regular community app, access, coffee hours and things like that. One-on-ones with council, weekly, bi-weekly updates, agenda reviews, retreats, employee recognitions, prioritizes no surprises, trust and objective and data-driven advice. Uh, in the economic development side of things, experience with property listings and tenant management, pass-through grants, partnership approach to attract retained businesses, aligns capital planning and developer negotiations with fiscal sustainability, um, keeping staff in the information loop, uses strategic planning, action plans, process mapping, assigned points of contact, regular check-ins, emphasizes staff ownership, cross-divisional collaboration, and transparent communications on the why. Financial, uh, strengths, financial discipline, long-range planning, intergovernmental coordination, strong community ties, clear public communication, networking, and innovation and problem solving. Uh, limited, uh, recent hands-on and operational management experience is one of his or hers, uh, weak points. Uh, full, uh, they, they have not worked in the full suite of public service, uh, such as police, streets, fires, municipal court. They don't have experience in all those areas. Uh, does have supervisor experience, uh, primarily though with contractors, and a small number of direct reports. Um, let's see. And, uh, will, we need at some level some onboarding to, uh, move from the scale that he's been at to the small scale of the community. Uh, I'm trying to point out here, these are kind of, uh, strengths and areas of, you could say, concern, or, pardon, a minimum tenure in their mind is five years. Uh, looking for a long-term commitment. Um, qualified for capital planning and fiscal stewardship. Um, let's see, uh, genuine local ties with communication strengths, make a cultural fit, I've noted. On the downside, no small-scale local government experiences I was talking about before. Uh, direct interaction with elected government, council, they've been separated from that. That's, that's a new piece, and that's a big piece here. But they do have lots of other talents, and they are a, an experienced leader, um, that I think is likely to be successful and can transition that. Uh, that's my view. Um, uh, but there is a big step in, in moving to a smaller scale, a much smaller scale than this person has experienced previously. Uh, there will be several people that I will say this about. Uh, this is one of those that has some strong talents, but might be able to benefit from some professional coaching in terms of leadership or management coaching. Um, and, uh, whether that's worth it, I, to you, I don't know, but I bring it as one way to mitigate this person and some other people as I talk about them. Uh, but I think there's a, a good chance within the first two years of this person being successful with some support. And so, success, what is that? To me, it is getting to the end of two years and knowing the job and being, doing reasonably good at it. It's always gonna be a perfect experience. Any city manager role is never quite perfect. Uh, but, uh, your first two years, by then you should be able to run the organization and, uh, and be able to move the objectives forward, uh, for your community. And so that's kind of what I mean by success, and it's why I use a two-year horizon. So, so that's a bit about Quinn Morgan. I'd like to move on because of the time, uh, to Hayden Clark. And, uh, I need to get Hayden in front of me here. Okay.
Go ahead.
Was the last bit that you talked about separate from...
Uh-huh.
That was a separate person you just talked about, right? With no name?
That was all one person, yeah. Quinn, that was Quinn Morgan, who was the pseudonym of the fake name.
And this is the number two person you're talking about next, correct?
This, that, that's the number two person I'm, I'm about to talk about, yes.
You allowed to give us any of their bachelor's degrees, specifically what they graduated in?
Uh, I can give you their degree. I won't be able to talk about when.
That's fine.
Uh, so, uh, yeah.
What was Quinn Morgan?
I need to look that up. I don't, didn't have that on this particular sheet.
BA in leadership, I got it down.
Um, I'm actually just trying to figure out the best source that I can quickly get to.
Ready.
Here's a, is there a way to include that on a final synopsis of all these people? That way you don't have to go back?
So Quinn Morgan has an...
MBA.
MBA, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I need...
All right. So, go ahead.
That's it. Go to number two.
Thank you. All right, which is Hayden Clark. And Hayden is my most recent interview. And I really thought I had Hayden in here, but I don't, so I need to go to a different, uh, different source. It's fresh in mind. So Hayden is a veteran, a marine, um, was Uh, Hayden has an MPA, Masters in Public Administration. Hayden has, uh, three years as a director in a regional, uh, excuse me, three years, three years as director in a Western Government Regional COG, Council of Governments, a large organization handling various functions of governments. Uh, they have had budget responsibilities typically in the eight and a half miller, million range, but has also, uh, she's also had up to a hundred million dollars in project budget at times. Uh, FTEs are the range of twenty to thirty, uh, and direct reports was approximately seven. Um, and this is going off memory because I don't have materials in front of me. Um, and, uh, she has also worked in a large western state, uh, metropolitan government, excuse me, not metropolitan, a large western state municipal government, uh, where she oversaw various aspects of emergency service for two years as a program manager. Uh, that included some response, uh, specific response work, and one point of pride was her work in managing the evacuation of a $10,000 neighbor, 10,000-person neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, let's see, uh, she has, uh, much experience in, uh, working in economic development, or land use for that matter. Uh, she has had experience in dealing with local government officials, uh, working with elected officials and helping them achieve their objectives, and she has had, uh, experience leading teams as well, both in military... Um, in total, she's had six years, or seven years of, of management. Um, so that's a bit about Hayden. Uh, she, uh, is your, your second veteran. And, uh, for both these candidates, one of the reasons they're at the top is because of the veteran's story. We don't take that away from them.
They both earned that.
They're both distinguished, uh, and we thank them for their service, as the state recognizes. Let me move on to Finley Brooks, if I may. And, uh... So, Finley Brooks, a budget of about $500 million, this is the operating budget, with 2,900 employees in a large city in the U.S. Population is in the range of 400 to 600,000. More recently, they've managed a $106 million operating budget with about 264 FTEs in a medium, medium-sized city, uh, in the Northwest, about 22,000. Um, they, uh, let's see. Number of direct reports, the, at most that they had is eight. Um, they have extensive municipal management experience in large and medium-sized cities, including strategic projects, controversial, uh, that dealt with controversial issues, labor negotiations, infrastructure, and organizational change. Also, they have private sector experience in land development and consulting in, in the development side of things. Finley and her spouse enjoy the Portland metro area and have a home in Oregon. Uh, she feels her background in managing both controversy and organizational change is well-suited to King City's current needs. Um, let's see. She has worked with, as I mentioned, a 22,000 population rural, uh, city as well, uh, and has lived, uh, lived in small towns in her life also. Uh, advocates... Advocates for open debate, cross, in terms of how she leads teams, advocates for open debate, cross-functional teams, and interest-based negotiations. Uses anonymous staff surveys to improve management and accountability, and fosters a culture of feedback and collaboration, and she tells a compelling story about how she used that to lead change in the organization that she was in. Approach to budgeting is directs departments to prepare municipal budget scenarios. This person uses a dual scenario where there's actually three scenarios, status quo, add three percent, cut out three percent from status quo. They use that to help identify where the priorities are at the department level. And they're comfortable in the, as a public face for the city, leading strategic projects and community initiatives, collaborates well with external partners and stakeholders, and distinguishes keenly between their professional and political roles. And I think this is one of the things that helps me score them a little higher in the philosophy piece that you've referred into. Maintaining a regular one-on-one of how she communicates with council, maintains a one-on-one meeting with council members, provides weekly updates, organizes roundtables and business and community affairs, values informal and informal communication channels as well, has experience in cities with divided adversarial councils and high staff turnover, skilled at finding middle ground solutions and restoring organizational stability, and she talked about how she was able to bring down the staff turnover at some, I've forgotten what the exact numbers were, but a significant amount of turnover in one city she was working in, and brought that down to a much more stable, consistent level. Known for created out-of-the-box solutions to complex problems such as dealing with endangered species, street maintenance fees, and a variety of things. Fitters themselves to be a strategic thinking and consensus builder. No specific weaknesses mentioned when that opportunity was there. Would have a pledge of a minimum of five years, possibly six to eight years. Finally, Brooks brings a deep experience in managing growth, controversy, no organizational change in both large and medium-sized cities. Her strength in strategic planning, team building, and creative problem solving lie closely, I believe, at the city's needs. She's well-prepared to unify staff and council, and has a background that has shown that, and is able, I think, to lead through a series of complex challenges. I think her likelihood of success is high. A proven track record in divided councils, organizational turnover change, strategic innovation, she'll likely succeed and build trust. She seems to have a handle on those tools, and she believes in transparency and effective communication as well. So having said all of that-
I did not hear education, P.
Oh, MPA, yes.
Okay. I thought you said that for Hayden Clark. Finley Brooks, I didn't-
You mentioned that, let's move into Finley's education. It happens to be an MPA, but you're right.
I thought it was MPA for both of them. I think I missed that part too.
Summary sheet that I can look at, it's very rough, but on my notes, it's an MPA.
Thank you.
Having said that, do keep in mind that though clearly I think this person is likely successful here, it doesn't mean they're a fit here. You're a better estimate of your fit and culture than I am. So I'm a little more on the experience side of things, and I can pick up some things of that fit. So I don't want you to be overwhelmed, even though I'm pretty strong on, so just use your computer. But that's Finley Brooks. We're kind of going over time, obviously, so you may need to, I don't know if you need to extend yet, I may get you there. Let's move on to Avery Lane. Yeah, we've been out of an hour, and I have another thirty-five minutes to go, so. Um, so, how's Avery Lane? Well, let's talk about Avery's-
Avery or Abrey?
Yes.
Avery?
Either way, I think it's Avery. But in that, they're really names I assign people, it's-
They're fake names.
Yeah.
I know who these people are when I get inside what I want to do, so I need to know their names. Thank you.
Yep, yeah, I appreciate your interest in getting it right.
These are, Vince, these are, these are not real names.
They're fake names.
That's that, I got it. Keep going.
Okay. I didn't know if you caught that, okay. You can call them whenever you want.
Just, yes, anyway, in any case, Avery has an MPA, she's in public administration, has been a chief executive officer, chief appointed officer, excuse me, and has served as an assistant director at some point. Was that in government or by the- In government, yes. Let me tell you more about her in just a second, I need to get her in front of me. Okay, largest budget, nineteen million, largest number of FTEs supervised or some oversight, thirty-eight to thirty-nine, number of direct reports, nine, perhaps ten. Has been a city manager for five years in both rural, Middle America and Oregon. She's overseen police, fire, airport, and department heads, and has managed mall and medium-sized cities. She has drawn to King City at forth similarities to her experience set, and has some ties to the area. She has an affinity for being within the three-county metro area, which you are, and so that is one of the things of interest to her. And believes her leadership style and experience will work with the council here. She has managed cities in the range of twenty-two hundred to five thousand residents, develops the ability, values the ability to change quickly and personally engaged with residents as well. Emphasizes the importance of doing staff, community members, people by name. Is experienced in navigating the unique dynamic and expectations of small towns. She empowers her team, avoids micromanagement, focuses on supporting staff through regular one-on-one meetings, bi-monthly meetings, hands-on involvement. She has implemented a evaluation system, values generational coaching, is committed to staff development and inclusivity. She leads by example, and, let's see, fostering a supportive and communicated culture. She uses a collaborative, transparent process, she says, involving staff, council early and often, provides quarterly updates. She prepares budget scenarios, prioritizes fiscal conservatism, and plans a three-to-five look-ahead process in her budgeting. She takes pride in accurate forecasting and stable budget process. And she is comfortable in a highly visible and accessible role. She attends and leads community events, regular updates and public meetings, and ensures the council and mayor as well about being informed about weekly emails and direct communication. Balances transparency with operational boundaries and tailors a new communication style to individual council members and preferences. Is known for her strong personality, drive, and commitment to community engagement. She values open, frequent communication with staff, council, and the public as well, in relationships. She has served in economic development boards, led commercial growth initiatives, grants, looked on housing and infrastructure projects, and has experienced in building regional partnerships and advocating for her city to attract and retain investment. She ensures department heads attend council meetings and communicate key information to their teams, the way of keeping staff in the loop, and provides regular city updates. Strengths is in her community engagement, transparency, and accountability and adaptability. Is known for her personable style, ability to trust, and willingness to listen. She aims to better manage stress related to social media and council concerns, and not overreact to online issues. She is not governed by Facebook and encourage, encourages direct communication. She's seeking a five-year commitment, and feels that aligns well with the city's growth trajectory, and is looking for a contract of that length. She brings a direct city management experience, strong budgeting, economic development skills, proven record of community engagement, change, and her collaborative, transparent style and hands-on leadership is well-suited to King City. Her experience with divided councils and growth challenges is relevant as well. She has a fairly high likelihood of being successful. Her experience, adaptability, proactive communication style, all of that, the tools that would seem to be a lead to success here. And, let's see, she likely to have success in uniting stakeholders, and is working towards key projects in her first two years. That's Avery.
Could I ask a question about the applicants, and the general question, it's not about any of these specifically. Are you aware yet whether or not they've been terminated from their current position?
In some cases, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Can you share that with us or not?
Not in this setting.
Even if one of them is, you can't-
Yeah, it's the, it's, there's enough in some of the-
Big law.
And terminated as a city manager? If it happens once, there's more city managers that it's happened to that hasn't happened. Happens twice, eh, okay. Happens three times, there's, that's something we should look into. I mean, if you're always looking, that's, that's really more of a point of concern. And you should know the details of any termination that, you know, that someone is willing to talk about. Often, there will be some sort of non-disclosure agreement in the course of settling the termination, and so you may not be able to get information very easily. But in general, just because they're terminated once in the current environment, isn't in itself a negative stroke to any particular city manager. But it happens a lot, that's a, that's a little-
The only reason I bring it up is because there's a lot of turmoil in the little cities around us here, Tucker's, North Plains, Donald, those, you know, those places. I've been reading it for a couple of years, they've all been, there seems to be a cycle of them going, so they're probably the same people that are applying for all these jobs.
Probably, yeah, there's people in the neighborhood.
Right.
So, I understand your point, yeah, and it's probably a very valid one. And so we try and work through that. But in a public setting, I'm not going to get into any details about such things.
I used to work at a big law firm, and a marketing manager told me that if she didn't get fired at least twice in her life, she wasn't a very good marketing manager. So I'm not, it's not, it's not a negative, it's just a question, right?
And the old, and along those lines, the average tenure for a city manager is five years.
Is it, okay.
Managers that are, that are in their thirtieth year, or, and I recently did a recruitment for one that was in their fortieth. Well, on the average, that means there's a lot of other managers that exited way before five.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, and Alex, we need to understand what Alex's education is. MPA for Alex as well. It gets a little dry before I get done. So for Alex, seventeen point five million is the largest budget, largest number of FTEs is six, officially has, unofficially has, has worked as an assistant managing staff for the city manager. She's worked in local government for about eight and a half years, starting as an admin clerk in a special purpose district, and moving up to being a project specialist, and serving in city administration after that. She has roots in King City, expresses a desire to, well, to serve in that community, she motivated by her love for local government and collaborative environments. Worked in, worked and lived in small towns for over thirty years, values the close-knit nature and direct impact possible in small communities. Her approach centers on engaged listening, and being coachable, showing compassion. She emphasizes validating others, collaborative problem solving, and caring for her team, while bound to elements in management and leadership. She is first in the department-level budgeting, regular monitors expenditures, advocates for clear requisition process to prevent overruns, collaborates on legal and procedural aspects of budgeting, ensures compliance with various procedures, supports transparency and accuracy in financial management in the public role. She collaborates closely with counselors and staff, attends meetings, helps prepare agendas and other documents, involved in the daily operations and open communication with city leadership. Values resourcefulness, continuous learning, teamwork, known for an ability to adapt and seek out knowledge, foster a supportive environment. She has managed projects such as a ten, excuse me, two million dollar tenant improvement for a special purpose district, contract managing, budgeting, and coordinating federal agencies. Encourages staff to use proper processes, collaborates on budget monitoring, as I mentioned And, let's see, strengths, resourcefulness, commitment to lifelong learning, compassionability, adaptability, collaborative leadership, and is known for her ability to listen and validate others. She's working on further developing her leadership skills, and particularly in direct supervision and personnel evaluation, and being, let's see, she expresses a strong desire to be in King City long-term, brings experience in small city operations, budgeting, project management. She does lack direct supervisory experience, having very limited, three direct supervisory responsibilities or reports. She has informal power, she uses informal power, which is a good skill, with her collaborative style and resourcefulness and dedication to learning. And her fit is probably strongest for a team-oriented, supportive environment. Likelihood of success is moderate to perhaps high. Her adaptability, collaborative approach will help her transition, though she may need to support, need support in personnel management and strategic leadership. And this is another one where some, professional coaching could help with that transition role. And that is, okay, brings us to Casey. Is an MPA as well. And, the Casey spot. Okay. So, Casey, ten million dollars total operating budget, crossflow funds, four million for one of the enterprise departments, utility departments, six million in capital projects is her experience, sixty-five FTEs. Casey, she has worked for a tribe as a general manager and also for a small local government as well.
I'm sorry, worked as a what?
Worked for a tribe as general manager. Manager, they tend to call it general manager.
And what was after that? The tribal?
Small-sized city as a city manager or administrator at the moment on...
Thank you.
Exact title. There's some technical differences, but I'll say in Oregon, those differences hardly exist. In other states, they're a little more crisp, but here...
Thanks.
So, let's see. Diverse career, having been in college athletics and private industry, measured up travel manager. Her title is city administrator, not going to go further on, which she spent in for three years. And drawn to King City's growth and expansion. Drawn to King City for its growth and expansion. Yeah. And views it as a real-life SimCity challenge, so. The SimCity, which is highly appealing to them. Extended three years in small Oregon city, about fifteen hundred people. I mentioned about a small tribe, which is about two hundred people. They've also worked in a county environment with about seven thousand employees. They're seven thousand people, excuse me, those residents now employs. Values open communication, outreach and close-knit relationships. Uses an open door policy approachable, builds trust through communication, avoids micromanagement, relies on subject matter experts and advocates for accurate job descriptions. Focuses on team goals and collaborative. Uses annual goal-setting process with the council, department-driven budget outlines, collaborative development, regular reviews, monitors key revenue sources, especially enterprise departments, adapts to changes and ensures alignment with strategic plans. Highly visible in the community, attends events, maintains the presence of city functions, regularly on one-on-one meetings with counselors, weekly meetings with the mayor, adapts communication style to individual preferences. Structured monthly department head meetings is one of the tools to use to keep people informed. Frequent informal interactions, helps the council actions after a meeting. Cheer staffs are informed and not blindsided by council decisions. Has not directly recruited businesses in the economic development realm of the, led strategic planning in downtown revitalization efforts, including code review, streamlining development processes, working closely with a port on tourism and immigration initiatives in that economic development world. You know, and uses both in-person and virtual meetings depending upon staff locations to keep them informed. Easy to work with, highly adaptable, creates a relaxed, open work environment and listens to diverse opinions, is what they consider her strengths. Anything, willing to change her mind when presented with a better solution. Areas for improvement, being a bit more assertive and disciplined in conversations, public speaking, can be a bit nervous. Limited technical expertise, so kind of familiar with a lot, but not necessarily a master of many, and limited technical expertise, excuse me, but compensates by relying on the experts that they develop trusted. Minimum pledge, five years, intends to stay in the greater Portland area, prefers small communities. Casey Winbring, hands-on state management, budgeting, strategic planning, her approachable style. New to the engagement aligned with King City's needs in general. She's well prepared for the challenge of growth in council dynamics. Though she may need support in technical areas and assertiveness. Likelihood of success is good, mid-range, I would say. Her experience with dynamic councils, growth management, community outreach position her for early success. Her collaborative approach and willingness to learn suggests she'll quickly build trust in a small environment, small community environment.
You said she might need training in assertiveness?
That was just, yes. So, in talking with her, one of the things that she said was, you know, I need, I can be a little more, I need help to be a little more assertive in some disciplinary actions. And so, that isn't my assumption, but it is a fact, it is what she said. So, and it's a key piece and I appreciate you asking about it, so, yeah. One of these things is just making sure your eyes are open about what's going on. You are, and that makes sense to you as a fit? Move on to... Skyler has an MPA as well. Yeah, that's good.
What's her name again?
This is Skyler Quinn.
Skyler, you got a lot, you got a lot of Quins there, don't you? You got relatives?
I do. I want you to know there's no relationship between them. Yeah, lots of Quins. So, Skyler has, her largest budget has been two point one million. And they're in a police background from out of state. They have twelve foreign officers they oversee and a part-time administrative assistant. And they work with three deputy chiefs and two investigators. Skyler's been a police officer since two thousand and nine and has had a career in that like the time that has taken her to being the chief as of twenty twenty-one. Along with the MPA, she has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Fourteen years' experience in local government, she's attracted to King City's growth, dynamic similarities to her current city and the city's focus on inclusion, inclusivity and community engagement. She parallels with challenges based in our own community and wants to contribute to King City's continued development. She's the lifelong resident of the fifty-eight hundred and stresses the importance of transparency and open communication in small towns where public trust is critical in response to the question of... In small communities. Values open dialogue, humility, team-based approach, focuses on employee development through collaborative goal-setting and regular feedback is comfortable addressing performance issues with empathy and fairness. Develops and manages the department's budget using a line item incremental system, planning in performance indicators, monitors expenses closely and prioritizes personnel costs. Limited direct experience as an economic development work. She points though to her community involvement and being on nonprofit boards and doing planning efforts in planning committees as well, but has not led economic development initiatives. Keeping city staff informed, she uses regular face-to-face meetings, follows up with council meetings to keep staff informed. Strong interpersonal skills, adaptive, good empathy, experience working in diverse agencies, ability to remain calm under stress. Areas for improvement, seeks to be more experienced in city management and broaden her skills, skill set on law enforcement. Would commit to at least ten years if selected, she says. Quinn brings strong leadership, good public service values, relevant small-town experience, her direct management experience is limited. Her commitment to learning, transparency and community engagement suggest a high potential for success. Her ability and people's skills would likely help her transition effectively and a projected long-term tenure indicates stability. She has not worked previously as a city manager or administrator. That has some risk associated with it. She's worked with counselors before as a police chief role and that helps. There is some similarity, particularly for a police chief, I would say. High provided, the likelihood, I think, is fairly high. Provided she receives support in areas outside her current skill set, such as economic development and some opportunity to work with experienced managers as well. That can help her bridge the gap that she has.
Did you mention the FTEs? FTEs?
Yeah, I think I did.
You said something?
Is twelve.
Thank you.
Largest number of FTEs and... So, it's Skyler Quinn. I'm going to move on to... So, Emerson has a, has a master's degree, I believe it is in planning-related activities. I don't know too much more about that, the discipline specifics in that. So, Emerson has worked in a city with a ten million dollar budget, about seventeen hundred... About ten million, roughly seventeen hundred population. Some of that budget included an eight million dollar grant. Typically, annual budgets are...
What capacity did she work in the city?
This is in the one I just mentioned, they worked the capacity of a city manager. And thank you for that, giving clarity on that. The scope of that city included police and other employees, let's see, about, population about thirty-two hundred and about five or six direct reports. They've also worked directly in economic development, having direct responsibilities for economic development. Managed small to medium, large Oregon cities, so seventeen hundred to about seventeen thousand. Building, background in building teams and community engagement in small communities. She likes the area, feels their strength in team building and staff development, council relations be suited here. Grew up in a small community, due to her father's federal service career and managed to work in cities ranging from about seventeen hundred to fifty thousand, as I mentioned. Enjoys the small-town dynamic. This is on building trust, listening, achieving, recognizing achievements and fostering open communication. Works on a staff through change and challenges, believes in connecting staff with council objectives, prioritized council, streams staff needs. Advocates for clear communication between staff and council. Budgets to address operational realities, such as replacing aging equipment monitors, meters, whatever it might be. Involved staff and budget development and ensures council understanding and operational needs. Highly visible and approachable, attends public meetings, community events, makes yourself available to residents. Believes elected officials should also be public-facing. Regular updates council, monthly, weekly as needed. Direct communication with staff through walk-around management, open door policy, builds trust through listening and responsiveness. Significant expertise in the economic development, such as, you might be familiar with, a program that's referred to as gardening and growing your own local businesses, something that they have, or she has some experience in. The tailored strategies to local strengths and has involved, in our larger community, best for recruitment for the city. Focuses on leveraging community assets and supporting business growth. Frequently direct contact with staff to keep them in the loop, skilled at getting people to work together, building pride and teamwork, known for transitional work. Area for improvements, this is being not at the top of her skill set. Needs, finds the detailed budget work challenging and relies on finance staff protected to pass, seeks to improve technical proficiency in fiscal management. Minimum pledge of seven years. Emerson brings experience in small city management, economic development, organizational transformation. Her strength in team building. She's well prepared, she says to unify staff, though she will need support in technical financial management. Nonetheless, I find her likelihood of, for success to be moderately low. Her track record in similar cities and ability to build trust, brings the staff dynamic staff and dynamic council positions, is the reason I say that. So, I question her likelihood of being successful.
Could you elaborate on that? I thought she sounded pretty good.
Okay. So, I just really, at the end of the day, when I take a look at the specifics that I have available to me, I just don't think she's likely to be successful here. Even though she hits on a number of those talents as described in the process of interview, when I get to the details of what her history is, I don't believe she'll be successful here. So...
We'll probably know when we see the resume. I mean, you know, it'll really help us with our...
It's, you know, if, I can't get any more specific with that in the current setting.
And then, the other twelve candidates were less likely than her.
Basically, didn't meet minimums. And if I have enough history with someone, I don't believe they're... Yeah, but that's, but I really am careful when I use that particular screen, so.
Yeah, that was a nice resume she submitted. If for some reason we did select her to be one of the interviewees, would we be able to determine what, yeah, you feel?
In the appropriate setting, where, excuse me, executive level, which is to say closed, private, generally private conversations, yes. But let's say you were to select her, and it's a good question, she's the only one I've said no to. If you were to select her, you absolutely can select her, you can interview her and you can hire her, there's nothing wrong with that, we'll support the process all the way through. However, if there's someone that I'm saying I don't think will be successful, we don't guarantee them. Because after all, we're saying, we don't think they're going to be successful, we easily could be wrong, go ahead. And the risk of success, then, is not ours, it's yours.
So, Steve, can you help me understand, why even bother putting that person on our list and even talking about it if you don't really feel like they're going to...
Right. Because you've looked at everyone that I wanted to share with you, everybody I interview, unless they withdraw. Unless they withdraw.
Oh, I thought you had twenty-two and you pared it already down.
Yeah, these are the ones I've interviewed, the other ones didn't meet minimums or I had some prior history that told me that, you know, I've had multiple interviews, I feel like I know them.
So, you said the A candidate, so out of the A, to friends and to A, and you're on the...
That's right. Others, but they don't...
They don't even get on the paper.
They don't meet...
They need the minimum count.
I have a question about the first person who had a big resume, lots of budgets. Why would that person be interested in coming to a small town?
So, you've got...
Because we are a small town.
I think that applies to that person and it also applies to another person here. Lazarek, quite a big impressive resume and she could compete in a city manager process for Tacoma if she wanted to, but she doesn't want to. She wants just a small community, she's done the big city stuff, she has, so this is the second one that you haven't asked about.
Are you going to tell me who that is? Sorry?
Number three.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Just by him on her. So, then these, them in big cities, has them essentially the number two in a national big city, meaning assistant city manager, similar role. And she's had enough of that. She wants to be in the big chair, but in a small place. And that's where her interest argument's probably, she's not done...
She has multiple years of career.
She wants to make a difference, but in a place she probably wants to stay.
I have a follow-up question, one you've told us... I have a follow-up question, when you've told us about a, a large percentage of them give a commitment for five years, is that just a standard thing?
Uh, yeah, it is, it's somewhat standard, uh, and it's also real, if you ask the question, something like this, out of minimum, how many years do you want to be in this role?
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and so they, I want to be... At a minimum, how many years do you want to be there? And when they say, well, at least twelve, at least twenty, it's, I, I have a hard time in my own mind, thinking that they're crystal clear enough... This is the place, or any place is the place, so I tend to discount that myself, but I'll, I'll list it as... Please.
Sure, um, my own personal experience as a businessperson, um... Then they go from a large place to a small place, they have a very difficult time making that adaptation. So, not that I don't want to consider those two people.
So, and I call that the, the difference in scale, and the difference in scale, you're right, is real, and that can be challenging, and you have to kind of press on that in your interview process, to see if you think that, or, or just say, I don't... The moving from a big city into here, that's, that's your choice.
Question?
You want to, you know, pull back from, mm-hmm. Yes.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
You referred to everyone as female, as she, is that to assume that they're all female, or is that just what you wanted us to think?
I, at the beginning of the meeting, I said, I'm going to call everyone female.
Okay.
They aren't all female, there are males in the, in the list, to obscure identity, gender, for everyone.
That's a good trick, I like it.
Um, yeah, Emerson, you said couldn't guarantee they're successful. So in your opinion, the other seven candidates all could be successful?
My opinion, yes, we'll, we'll stand by our, our guarantee, we provide a two-year warranty, or we, excuse me, the warranty varies depending upon the contract, and the longer the warranty, the more the contract costs. I need to look at your contract, I don't really, but whatever that warranty is, we'll stand by that for the other candidates, but not Emerson, for the reasons I explained. And what happens if they leave before that warranty is, is used up, if you know it's gone? Then we will do the research, whether we will do the recruitment a second. Services, now you would have to pay for advertising, and, and actually, my problem also is that...
Do you know what our warranty is? Do you know what our warranty is?
Our warranty?
The length.
Probably between one...
Typically, it's between one and two, and I, and I need to look it up, and, excuse me for not knowing, but it's a detail, and at this stage, I, I, I did need to, um, memorize it.
I made my warranty.
Somebody calls about an extended warranty soon.
So, a couple of questions and a couple of points. Um, I think that, if I'm understanding what we've discussed, our, we can possibly interview all of these people with maybe two alternates. Like, we can have the first six, and then we can have two alternates, possibly, council has to discuss if we want to do that, six and two, possibly. Um, the reason why I'm saying that is because, um, like we discussed earlier, all of us, that there may be some background things that pop up, and it's, it's nice to have a few alternates. I think we have to make that decision, um... So, well, so I'm wondering if it's okay to ask a call on that as a last alternate, possibly?
That is entirely your choice, so it's your process, yeah.
Right, okay, but you're not gonna guarantee that person, we got it.
Yeah.
And then the other question I have, and it's also just a general observation and thought from the council, is that, you know, we haven't drawn up a contract, to my knowledge, for hiring a new city manager, and I would really, really think... But I'd like to, yeah, I'm sure she would, but hold on before you interrupt me, I would really encourage us to have a work session as council to really put forward what we want in that contract. There are some real important things I would say, actually, that we would want in those contracts, and the contract that we had prior, I won't go into details, Missy, but that prior contract was not in the favor of the City of King City, it was not in the favor of the City of King City. So, I want to make sure that we are, the council's not biased, and not processed.
Oh, so, so come on that next page, but I'd like to see council to be involved.
I've asked Ashley's firm, Ashley Driscoll's firm, who did some of the work for you all in the term, period, and then still a retained city attorney, um, who, they have employment lawyers, they don't have employment players, I've asked her to, um, help work on that.
What about Adam Collier? Adam Collier does labor, I'd like to encourage...
This is employment.
But he does employment as well, so I'd like to just...
I can reach out to him, too.
Yeah, I'd like...
He'll do that.
But instead of being driven by staff and council...
I don't have a person in that, so...
Right, but instead of the city council, again, being dictated to by outside counsel, it would be nice for the council to sit down and figure out what we want, to, to just help have some say in the council's role.
If I can just expand on what Missy was saying, she's reaching out to get different types of contracts that we can look at as council to make it better than what was before. So I think we need to come with some examples of what other cities have, what could be included, and then, yes, I agree, we need to nail down as a council what we would want to see in that contract. Because I think we're all in agreement that the, the last one wasn't, is not what we want to move forward with.
Right, so, oh, go ahead.
Well, I just think we should probably discuss how we want to, um, decide on the candidates moving forward. I'm not sure if there's a normal process for this, can we just vote on each candidate, as far as if we would like to move them forward to final interviews?
Right, the process is, is essentially yours to do whatever is, is your, your standard practice, or how you'd like to proceed, and if you need some suggestions, I can help, uh, the city attorney can help perhaps, too. Uh, I would, and you can, uh, include everyone on the list if you choose, however, this is an opportunity to bring this down to... And there may be some value in that. If, uh, processing all of these, uh, you will find that you're going to have more people drop out, because they're, I'm going to ask to be... And the odds are less likely for them, uh, that they're gonna be... Why do I miss my career with my current job?
We're only going to six, because we only have two alternatives. Anyway, before I forget, I forgot, I have ten pages of notes, I'm happy to share them around the room, since they're pretty accurate of what you said. If you want to do that, I can make copies, or have, if anybody wants to look at it, no, okay.
Missy?
Um, I just, I appreciated what you said about how to look at this, and who, who wouldn't, the council wants to move forward, rather than...
That seems like, um...
So what do you envision our next step is, Steve?
So, it would be to, uh, in order for us to stay on, be able to timely respond to all of this, it would be today, selecting who you'd wish to invite, and it may be easiest to just say, who do you wish to...
I think, are we all in agreement that we would like to move forward with the first two as veterans?
No.
No?
No.
I don't know.
It's not unanimous.
No.
But we were kind of told we needed to move forward.
Not unless we're required to.
We do, so, that has potential for consequences, uh, so, because of the state, uh, preference process for veterans, these people might be in a position to challenge that decision and require you to include them. That will probably have a cost of time and, uh, legal expense, that's an issue at risk, and I think the attorney can...
Well, it would have been better if you'd left the veteran status off the page.
I heard the list in, in my scoring, as I have here.
Oh, okay. I recommend that you, yeah, keep those veterans.
We have to keep them both?
Uh, it, my recommendation is for you to, but, of course, you can... I agree with Adam being suit.
I don't think there's a...
You can keep them both, but there's, I know I've done, I've gone through a lot of hiring processes, and it sometimes seems cruel to keep them on if I don't have any intention of hiring them, and then there's confidentiality, but if we're, our legal advice is, we keep them both, I'll follow your direction.
Thank you, Colonel. And I'm sure, I'm sure you have not decided yet, um, without trying to interview them.
Well, we're, we're in a win-win process, and I have them, you know...
Well, it's, it's a couple of state law requirements.
Okay. So we gotta mind by that.
Your, your...
I'd like to interview the top four.
Can you give us the state law that says we have to interview a veteran, before I can know what it is?
The code section, but I, I can...
I would like to avoid issues and leave them on as, I mean, they have impressive resumes, I don't think there's any reason that we shouldn't bring them in for an interview. You might have reasons that you wouldn't want to, that's why we're all doing this together, but, um, I would like to avoid any, any issues for the city moving forward and legal fees.
I sort of ranked everybody, just, this is my own personal ranking. And I think I would like to interview Finley and Avery, Casey beyond the two veterans, and Alex would be my...
That's what... Can you say again, Finley, Avery, and which other one?
Casey. So we should go around the room and do just that?
Well, okay.
I mean, I know we're supposed to kind of talk about who we might not want to move forward, but I almost feel it might be more beneficial to say, would we all be in agreement with Finley, right? So...
Finley does not live in Oregon right now, so that's hurting, we have to find, you know. Finley Brooks, um, is...
Does not live in Oregon.
Or even somewhere in the United States, not in Oregon.
I very much liked what was said about Finley, so I would like to move them forward. Um, I don't know if we need the formal motion, or if we can consensus.
I can talk, I always can talk. I think we should interview the first six, and put Skylar and Emerson on the, that gives us six.
Okay, so, Finley, I want to move Finley forward, we're just gonna do...
Yes.
Are we in consensus? Um, Avery? Okay, um...
Alex, yes.
Yes, Alex? Casey, yes. I, I think it's Casey, that's, that's fine, um, and then Skylar. So, um, what did we think about Casey? At least everyone said yes, I had concern about Casey.
I didn't.
Yeah, I said no to Casey.
Finley, Skylar, and Emerson off.
My concern with Casey was this claimed needs help being assertive, and... I was, I, difficult situations and disciplinary actions, and I just think we've kind of gone through a lot in this year, and that's kind of probably a really key characteristic that we already have. That was why I... Not move forward with...
Is that what you were talking about?
Casey, when?
I agree with that, I'm sorry, I, I forgot that one, I said I'd take the first six, so I, I'd like to restate, they'll take the first five.
Casey again, I...
Yeah, fine.
Um, so then Skylar, that was our chief of police, we can't knock chief of police, right? They can do a really good job at being...
I agree, yeah.
And I would rather not bring in Emerson Cole if our, if we wouldn't have...
Yeah, I agree.
But maybe I just need to have five, and...
Okay, Vince, I haven't heard your, um, yeses and nos, but what we kind of consent, had a consensus with right now, and you can say if you disagree with any. The first two we'll bring forward, Finley, Avery, Alex, and, did we say Skylar? And Skylar?
Wait, you've got Quinn Morgan, Hayden Clark is two, Finley Brooks is three, Avery Lane is four, Alex Monroe is five, Skylar is six.
Right, so did we want to do six, or did we want to whittle it down to five?
I'd go with five.
I'd go with five.
I said, I'm good with five, because...
Express concerns with Skylar.
Correct, yes, I did.
I'm good with that, I'm good with those five, yeah. When will the interviews be? I've got a...
The first five?
I'm good, the interviews, I can't be on December first, because I'm with three oncologists that day, so...
It won't, it won't be December first, Missy is unavailable until the third, so I think we were looking at third, fourth, or fifth, so we'll, um, we'll have chief slash city manager send out an email, and we'll get that figured out with everyone.
I will try...
Skylar be on the alternative list? If we're only gonna interview five, it's good to have an alternative in case one or two of these, um, have a background issue?
I am in agreement with Skylar being an alternative, if there, if one drops out between now and final interview. Is everybody okay with that? Or, is anybody not okay with it? Raise your hand if you're a no, to Skylar being an alternative.
I have doubts about that, but this doubt should...
Just for an, I mean...
Just for an interview, doesn't matter, too.
If somebody drops off, I think interviewing five is still good, so...
We have a consensus of yes, keeping Skylar as an alternative.
So, we're gonna move forward with first five, Morgan, Hayden Clark, Finley Brooks, Avery Lane, Alex Monroe. If one of those happens to not be able to move forward to final interviews, we will bring in Skylar Quinn. Casey and Emerson.
Question?
Go ahead.
What if after the interviews, we don't feel any of these people are adequate?
Yeah, if that's the case, we'll do this again.
All right.
And we don't charge with a service fee, but you would have the advertising cost and other expenses. And we would suggest you wait...
And for today, I would also like to discuss, um, how we're gonna bring them in, because I know we've floated a few different ideas. We're gonna have the, we'll have the community open house tonight before. What other ways can we bring the community in, input on this? Yes?
Open house, just to complete that, so we can talk more about the details, but usually, we provide a, a card that has a brief bio of each of the candidates that are at the open house. And then it has a spot for each person to write comments that come back to you, and so there's a information loop coming back, and it's structured now. They can also call you, email you, whatever your usual, or talk in the grocery store, whatever it is that... But just know that that's one of the things available.
That'll be included at the open house?
Yes.
Can we include that on our website, leading up to that, like, have the, the five people we are final interviewing on our website, so people have a chance to look at it before?
So I have a concern, my concern is, it's more in the abstract, it's not about King City, but my concern is, sometimes candidates will, can have a little campaign going on, that will cause their, they can have their friends, cousins, Aunt Sally, you know, go into the website and fill out cards for them, in order to...
Not necessarily for feedback, just for information purposes. Here are the five we're moving forward with.
Yes, absolutely.
You're aware.
Like Trump nailed it with her.
It's that feedback piece that...
But then, so soliciting feedback just at open house, and then taking that into interview day?
Yeah, or whatever other processes you like, I'm just saying, uh, and I've misunderstood, so that's, that's on me, but we can, yes, we can put the bio up on, on the website, at, when the time is appropriate, after the candidates have had a chance to tell their employer, that's the key thing.
Yeah.
That can go up, uh, and then they'll have a chance to read about them, and, and decide how to move on. The, the feedback loop is more about them, if you store an email to you, which, or however you choose to do it, you can direct the feedback as you choose. I just didn't want to, my concern, I articulated already...
And then what type of, um, involvement do you typically see on final interview day?
So there's an opportunity to have several panels, um, and, uh, I would facilitate decision-makers panel. The other thing we have is another panel or two, that's probably enough, three maybe, but that's a little heavy, a little too much in some respects. So let's say we have two other panels in which, on, uh, you might want representatives of the staff, you might want community leaders or business leaders. Uh, I know HOAs are important here, perhaps there's a way to bring, uh, some of those people on. Uh, the panel should be somewhere between three and seven, so that's kind of how you want to do it, and by all means, mix the panels up. Don't have the HOAs sitting just as HOAs, don't have the employees sitting just as employees. Integrate them, and you're gonna have a, a more complete set of comments from each, each panel that way.
So then each candidate would go to each set of panelists, like... So then each candidate would go to each set of panel, so like three interviews in that.
That's three interviews and they have that. Yeah, and then there's some other techniques that I would rather share at another time. It isn't, not a, not a big thing, but it doesn't work as well if it's a, uh, not in a public forum, so. Um, but we can have, uh, there's a way to facilitate this that will bring the information out from each of those panels. And I, I want you to make sure you understand the point of this. It is for those other two, to describe what it is they see as each candidate's strength and what they have about themselves. But what we want panel to stand back away from is coming in and telling you what to do. That's, that's an important distinction. You're responsible for how this turns out, it's your decision. Given the reasons why one candidate or another candidate has strengths and concerns for each person. The distinctions between these, but don't say you must hire Sally or you must not hire Sally. That, that isn't, that isn't gonna help you in the long run.
Could we help them with the questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that they don't ask all these that are on the, the lobby list.
First, the city council may come up with questions that each candidate will be asked.
Consistency and nobody can say they not treated the same.
Yeah.
Are you gonna do that for us?
I'll help you with that, yes.
Oh, good.
So that's one piece. The second piece is, I know you're gonna get into it, but it's really important that we stick to only those questions and not go outside, because it's very easy to ask about an age or a thing that's illegal. And, um, so if we cut a script and everybody sticks to it, and then if we rank it like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, like they did well, and, you know, and you have something as a legally defensible document, shouldn't anybody come back and say they weren't treated fairly?
Right, so, uh, you know, thank you, that was a very good process from, from our process. And we can help you put the questions. Usually how it works is I'll identify things, you'll help me figure out those are right things, I'll ask questions, and we'll fine tune the questions with your interview. And we'll do that for each of the three panels, if that's yourself and the other two. Uh, I'll have a facilitator in that panel as well. And we may use somebody locally that I train, or we may bring somebody in. But it's easier, it's easy to train on this, so. Uh, but you want them to be a, a neutral party.
I have a question, Steve.
Sure.
At the beginning of this meeting, you talked about an eight hour long meeting. Which one is that?
That would be the final interview, and potentially, now with five candidates and, believe me, you're probably gonna have somebody drop out. You're gonna have five to three candidates, and that changes how long it takes. But, uh, we'll have several different activities during the course of that interview process. And then we need some time to bring everybody in the room and do some training, right, at the first start of it. They need to sit through potentially five interviews during the course of the day. But we need some time to have lunch somewhere in there, hopefully a good lunch. And, um, and then there's a debrief at the end of the day too. So that debrief is part of it. And then you need to have an executive session for just you and me and perhaps the city, and the city attorney as soon. Um, to not make a decision, but to just have a discussion about, you know, what did you each hear? And start forming some opinions. And if, I'm sure we'll have some guidance about how far you can go in that executive session. Because ultimately you need to come out of that meeting without a decision being made and bring that and have the decision process in a public meeting at some point.
And so all of those meetings you're talking about and the panels, the public will be involved except the one executive.
Yeah, they, yes, there's some aspect of, of public. I, I have, I'm gonna back away from that statement. Um, the, um, uh, some people, some, some communities have actually had the interviews televised. I don't recommend that. I don't, because it inhibits your candidates and you don't get frank answers. But, so, the, the interview process itself, at least with you, should not be, in my view, televised or open to the general public if possible.
So it's an executive session?
In my view, that should be the executive session.
Thank you.
I'm not sure yet.
Thanks.
And that's the opinion that matters.
I think that needs to be in, in a public session.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I am assuming that when we, that when you schedule these people, you're not going to schedule a number one, two, three, four, and five, because then that might, that might color people's opinion as to.
No, they'll, it'll be.
The validity of the candidate.
Right, but we'll, we'll mix it up as a random schedule. And really, the way it's going now, we'll have three people starting at the same time. Because you have, and you actually, we may have a fourth activity, so you may have four people all starting at eight thirty or nine o'clock, whatever it is. And so there really isn't a, a first candidate in any case. So you just rotate those through musical chairs, so to speak, as you go through the process.
So I know we've talked about timing, but to me, I've got a very full schedule the first week of December. The second week of December, I may be in trial. Um, what is our hurry? Do we have to have this? Because travel right now with the holidays and scheduling is very stressful to me personally. And I'm assuming it'll be stressful for candidates, because they're probably juggling a lot of things like we are in front of the holidays and travel and things like that. Do we have to have all this done by December? Can we switch it off to the first week of January when things are calmer?
Well, you don't, you own this process. So if that's what you want to do, you can do it. But you're likely to lose most of your candidates. So.
They're not just looking at things that they're also looking for other times.
Oh, okay. So they want to move by.
And I think that's why we had chosen the first week of December, so that we would have it done before the holidays, after Thanksgiving, before the, you know, holiday season.
That, that is it, and, you know, I mean, ultimately, it's, uh, the council's decision is the timing. But the risk issue is a real one, that they will take other positions, lose interest, whatever it might be.
But the plane tickets right now, Steve, I don't know if you've priced them, but even if you go online today to get a ticket right now, it's like three times the normal price. I'm not exaggerating. I was trying to plan some fun travel, but just to spare, yeah. And instead of the $100 ticket, it's a $900 ticket. I'm not exaggerating. So.
So it's, it's challenging.
That's a concern, because if we're gonna be flying people in here and we're paying three times the normal rate, that's not being very efficient and reasonable.
Well, this is you get to make, so, um, and, uh, you know, as to how you work it. However, uh, my reflection is you have one candidate that is likely to be flown and the rest are not likely to.
I think we ought to stick with our schedule that we really talked about.
I agree.
In agreement. Then that's the posted timeline, I think we move forward. Um, so would we come into, um, open session after that? Like, is this all happening in one day? Interviews, executive session, come out and decide?
Yeah, possibly, but, you know, it's, it's up to you and, and the city attorney, I keep bringing it into.
I'm also still not sure about the executive. I actually do think that often the candidate needs to be in open session. I need to check on the availability of executive sessions.
Okay.
And obviously there are positives and negatives to both.
Yeah.
Positive, so having this discussion in an, uh, open session is transparency. And it's not like, you know, what the council's thinking.
Candidness is, uh.
It is, um.
Also, also about it.
So you, and then, you know, have some negatives too, which is the more early exposure that candidates have, the less they want to, even the discussion of, you know, even those, we all know Sally was in the, in the selection process. Uh, if you're going to talk about, if you're gonna talk about Sally's warts in public, that might cause Sally to not want to go.
Right.
Process.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you have a hand up?
Um, can you provide a spreadsheet summarizing some of the information you gave today on the final interviewees? On just the five?
Yeah, just the five.
Uh.
And I'm gonna need a little bit of, uh, time to do that.
Not, not a huge question.
But before.
Oh, yeah, you'll have a whole, at that stage.
There is some stuff coming in ready.
Yeah. No, you'll have a full packet when you, as you approach the interview process. Uh, which, the packet will have a resume, cover letter, a writing sample, um, and that's about it at the initial packet. The day of the interview will have the background checks and references, so.
The day of the interview.
Oh, city attorney, are we supposed to?
With our public records.
Their public records, so we need to, I'm gonna have to let somebody make photo props.
Um, should we just open our calendars now and nail down a date for next?
So, uh, so this is important.
Cause I know you, I know you wrote it down.
Be able to have a defendable process.
Yeah, same one.
Finley, focus on the inappropriate question section, uh, so you know where that is.
Yeah, well, if we make a list of questions that we know we're gonna stick to, then we know we're not gonna go off of there, that that's a decision that people should be.
Well, cause I think we should allow ourselves follow up questions. And so being aware of what is a good follow up and what is.
Probably what it is.
And we're going, excuse me, we're going to get public interview, or, uh, questions also. So we kind of want to make sure they know that some of those, you just can't ask that question, like how old you are.
Maybe we'll have a sheet that you give everyone that says, these are off limits questions to ask.
Um, so the questions, are we talking about the public reception?
Anything where we're getting input from the public.
So where you have people who don't know, who don't normally interview other people, they may ask inappropriate questions.
I don't have an effective way to train your population, so.
But you did say you would have a facilitator, so they, that person could say, we're not.
You need to get strict. Yes, we have a facilitator working with panels.
Yeah.
They'll be, they'll be trained, but that's, that's five to seven individuals. We've got that happen, we can handle that.
Yeah.
Uh, twelve hundred, not so much, or whatever. Anyhow, that's.
But maybe a statement prior, letting people know, you know.
Uh, yes, we can do. Wouldn't you have a moderator there that's actually asking the questions? It kind of, and you just let the public listen to the answers of what. So that's what I think we're talking about, a couple of different processes, and I don't know that this is, this may be the time to do that. So at the reception, you're not, it's not a town hall where people are shouting out questions to them. It's a reception that is more akin to, I will say, we have five candidates. Those five candidates will, will, uh, have a chance to talk to everyone on a small group basis. So they'll go to the corners of the room or at the table, and people can ask them a variety of questions and they, the candidate can choose or not choose to do whatever it is they're going to do. Uh, well, that's, we're not, we're not posing a particular question on, and it's small group. Uh, and then hopefully those, the public members will bring you feedback about what that experience was and if they, what their thoughts are. So that's that reception in a short, uh, description. The interview day, we're gonna have structured questions. There'll be about twelve for each panel. The first, there's three or four questions that are just standard that you're gonna use, uh, for the most part. So you really have six questions, maybe eight questions to identify. And, uh, because an example of standard question is, you always want them to do some sort of summary at the beginning, and you usually give them a chance to make a closing statement at the end. Well, that's, that's two out of ten gone now. So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to, uh, to work through and give you some sense for. We're, we're highly structured for the panel interview. Um, there may be a chance for follow up questions, we'll talk more about that later.
And the panels are happening at the same time that we're here interviewing them, uh, executive or public session, right? So.
How do you hear about what happens?
Uh, I'm sorry?
How do you hear about what the panels are thinking?
Yes, so the moderator tells us, right? So we'll need to book rooms someplace else, over in K C C A U. So that they go across the street to have, so they have room for the panels.
But you'll, you'll, you'll need multiple rooms to have.
Okay.
To work. And yes, the facilitator and a couple of panel members from each panel will come in at the end of the day. The facilitator will. Questions too, so.
I, I said this to a number of people, we can't have too much public input, I don't think. I think that's critically important for this community, this way the atmosphere is. So, um, I, I'm hoping that we can get a lot of opportunity for the public to question the candidates.
So you've got that community, uh, which is more of a reception, uh. And we can work on it as well. Have some room there. The, uh, the panel process, it's, it's going to be, you know, new and two other panels with about seven people on each panel. So, you know, can it go to eight, probably, you know, can it go to fifteen? No. Uh, so that's, you know, there's some parameters we need to, to work within. Um, and then maybe some other tools, um, that we could potentially use. But I, I think I need to know more about, uh, how that works. And you probably also want to figure out, you want a public vote, which is probably.
No.
You want? Uh, you want to get some sense of opinion though, and, and a vehicle to provide for that.
I would bet that our C I O would probably have some suggestions or input.
I mean, ultimately though, this is a council decision, um, public. Having the public meet with the panel candidates is really, really important. Um, public input in the, the hiring process is a lot more difficult. To keep it in the legal sideboard of what is appropriate to consider and what isn't.
But isn't there something different than public input would be public questions?
Well, so can I, I, I mean, what I'm hearing Councilier Hart say and what I'm hearing Missy say, I understand it's a difficult process. I think the council, because again, what I'm trying to say is, sometimes the council, we kind of feel pushed by outside people. And what I want to find out, and I'm sure the mayor agrees with me, is if we really want to have public input, which it sounds like you think is very important, I concur with you, and I don't know how you feel about it or the rest of you. If we are gonna do that, we are gonna have to elongate the process. I am feeling rushed. This is a really important decision for the city, based on ten years of history we've already had, I won't go into it. I, I would personally like to suggest to my fellow counselors that we explore the option of figuring out a way to really involve the public more than just having them meet and, uh, meet and greet. But that's, that's a decision I think we should be making.
So.
We haven't really had that opportunity, because the process has pretty much been told to us it's gonna be this way.
So these are options, and there are other options as well. But I, uh, but those are things we can talk about. Uh, but I'll tell you that we're on the timeline we've talked about. And at some time, we've been asking to have some dates set for this. And this list has a shelf life to it. It will go stale by January, and we'll end up doing the.
Steve, can I ask, just, can you give us some examples of what other cities, because you've done this lots? What have other cities done tangibly to get community input? Like what can we implement?
Yeah, um, so, uh, I, I've, uh, described, I think, one of, some of the things we use. The other thing that I didn't want to talk about here is we can do it, we can do tours with candidate. And that's a chance to hear from a few other people, their perspectives from that tour experience.
Touring what, the, the community?
Your facilities, whatever it is, but something that fits within no more than about forty-five minutes. So, uh, that offers some more input opportunities. Uh, that's often done. It could be community members, it could be, uh, more often it is, uh, lead staff that's involved in those tours. That's one of the tools. The, um, we've been talking about a reception, you could do a public forum. And I think it depends, you know, how many people you're anticipating. Uh, the public forum could be televised, uh, if you have those services available. I guess everybody has, uh, some aspect of, of broadcasting at this point. Uh, so those are some ways. But think about what your feedback tool is, and try and make sure the feedback tool can't be subverted to being a vote. Uh, that, that's open to outside processes, outside influence, and also appears to be contrary to what your authority is, so.
Well, I have a question for you. So if Missy does the research and finds out that we're gonna be doing a lot of this the public way, where it's televised, could we open up a forum of comments, like an open forum, and the public could put whatever comments they want there? Not for the whole public, but it would be comments that would really just be sequestered to city council so that we could see their feedback? Is that something, is that a compromise that we? Is that something, is that a compromise that we could embark on? Just because another city hasn't done it doesn't mean King City couldn't be a leader in setting a precedent for other cities in doing this?
Right, other cities have done it. Um, and so, there are some
Missy, that way, whoever wants to comment, they could make whatever comments they want. They could watch, in a sense, the candidates, the city council, the forums, and decide, and at least they could feel like they've been heard and read in.
You mean verbal comments, like out of public meetings?
No, put it online, because I don't think they'd have the time to listen to more than a few, you know, comments, but if they could put their comments online in a public, in a private setting that we could
No, because that would be a public record. You can't communicate to the
What if they just put it out on a public forum, that we could, everyone could see it?
You know, I guess, like, I think what I heard Steve trying to say in balance here is that, um, that commitment to public involvement is really laudable, but also there's a whole other side of this, which is, these are candidates, these are people's lives
That are on a short timeline.
And we want to open up a chat to having the public comment, you know, anonymously or however you want to do it, that they're I do think it's important to remember in a hiring process, that there are two things going on. You want the best person for the city, these people are also interviewing, and I think that's really important to keep in mind.
I think that what Steve is saying is involvement, and the input's going to come from what the facilitator brings us back after the involvement meeting, is that correct?
Out of the panels, yes.
Okay.
At the reception, you're going to read written comments from the reception.
Okay, I understand.
Um, if we did tour of the community reception, you were talking about the feedback tool, so what would be the feedback? Like, how do we get the feedback from
Steve, you're great for involvement.
But then, how do we get that feedback?
Uh, so the reception, that's what I was saying, is pretty structured, we have this card, it will involve several cards perhaps with this number of candidates. But it has a brief bio, and then it has a question, three questions underneath that are basically, you know, what do you think this person's strengths are, what do you think their concerns are, you know, how many concerns about this candidate? And then optionally, somebody can sign their name or not, and
So that's just whoever decides to come the night before, they'll meet the candidates, and then they give whatever feedback they want.
I basically make sure that I've got control of that. So, which is to say, I, they hand them to me because I don't know anybody, and I don't, you know, I don't say, you know, I'm throwing around whoever, because I don't know who they are. Everybody's equal in my world, and so I bring those to you the next morning, or in the process, and pass those around, and you take turns reading them around.
And is this super informal, like, they're just talking with small groups, or are they answering these questions for, like, all the people at once?
Yeah, so the reception that I refer to, it's super informal.
Okay.
And those groups just sort of come, people come and go from the tables or wherever the candidate was standing.
He posted everyone?
Yeah.
He posted everyone.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Uh, the, you know, in trying to see how to broaden this out in a different way, you could do more of a town hall where the candidates are in front of a crowd, and you are sort of having candidates taking turns asking, being asked questions. And that really raises questions about what is really, you know, what's the design? Does everybody get the same question, or everybody gets a different question? If you're the first person to answer the question, or the third person to answer the question, is that, or the fifth person to answer the question, is that fair? And if you have five candidates taking turns speaking, that's an hour to go through three questions. So, there's a whole lot of different things to sort of, to kind of keep in mind about your design. The advantage, you know, like everything, there's positive and negatives to it, so.
Sounds to me, I mean, I really appreciate everyone's input here, because it's really, I'm thinking very carefully everything that's been said in the room, but I don't know, and maybe I'm the only one who's thinking this, but we appreciate that this is sensitive for the candidates. We also understand we don't want stale candidates if we elongate the process. But my concern is, thinking about while we're talking, the price of not picking the right person is going to be really catastrophic given what we've been, I feel.
Could that be alleviated in the contract that we bring forth, right, with the probationary periods and meeting specific expectations? I think there's still ways that we can make sure everyone's like
But still, you're right, but still, the impact of bringing in somebody even for a few months, it caused so much havoc with our staff, it's already been through an enormous amount of turmoil, I feel, and luckily, there's been stability brought by these two right here. Um, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud with Steve, because I think he has a flavor, and I know Missy has a flavor, and we all have lived through it, what's going on here, and, I don't know, I'm feeling a little bit unsettled.
I can appreciate that, it's a challenging situation, and it is a big decision for your community. It's, but if there is too much public exposure to certain aspects of this, you will have fewer qualified candidates, and that's also contrary to what you want. Uh, so
I think we're getting there from here, and I'm glad we're having this discussion. I, you guys are the experts, and my view would be to, you know how we feel, you know how important it is to get public input, and it sounds like that need will be met, as long as we can do it legally, is that correct, Missy?
With the night before reception? I like the idea of the night before reception, where it's there in a corner and people just can kind of
Talk.
Over through and talk, casual.
We can serve her in wine.
Have to ask your lawyer.
Can I ask another question?
I have to get to it to
Yep. Would we go about selecting the panelists?
It's entirely up to you, but it's an important discussion, and I, again, I just suggest you have a mixture of each, was that
I guess, I just, how has it been done, we haven't done this, so how has it been done? Can we have some direction?
You get together whoever, as a council, as a smaller group, it's easier to just do these things as a smaller group, subset of a quorum. Um, and you name the people that you think are possible, so when you go through, how do I get a balance of the, we'll say 14 people, I have 14 seats, you know, who do I represent in those 14 seats? And I'm thinking about all the different stakeholders you have. And sometimes one person may cover several different
So it's like, it would be like all of the HOA presidents, or somebody off of their board, right? And then the people that come to these meetings should be the ones that are invited, the people that actually come and care about what's happening here.
And Steve had also mentioned, like, business owners.
And staff.
Well, staff, makes, yes.
Okay, okay. Jessica, do you have a moment to just look at the calendar real quick before you take off? My preference is December 3rd or 5th.
I know I can't do it on the 5th.
Okay, is everybody good for the 3rd?
I'm good with the 3rd.
I'm good with the 3rd.
With the reception on the evening of the 2nd.
Yeah, is that, does that work with you? Okay.
So the 3rd would be the
The Wednesday.
Yeah, and that's when we would do the interviews, correct?
Well, that, it seems like that's the all-day one.
Oh, I don't know if I can do that yet. I got to, I didn't put my schedule for work on my, work on my home schedule yet, but I will be able to tell you by end of today.
The other thing that I think is, I mean, I have just been through a ton of hiring processes, and a lot of the difficulty right now is that you haven't, you know, there aren't, you know, people to put with the fake names that are going to turn into real names. So I do think that, like, once the process moves forward and you meet people, in my experience, the top people just rise to the top, and they, it's pretty apparent
I agree.
When you have the reality of the situation versus the excellent job on the fake names.
Yeah, and I have to say, I do understand council president's concern about, I mean, I think that we all take this decision, you know, it's so important, right? Like, I think that's one of the biggest things that I think about all the time, is like, don't mess it up, right? And so I do understand the concern, but I think we just need to keep moving through the process. And, you know, we're never going to be guaranteed that we're going to
Right.
Take the right decision, we're going to do the best that we can with the information given, and, um, and I trust everyone's, you know, brain in this room that we can, you know, we know what we've, we know what we want, and, you know, I think having our, the conversations that we have and the debates that we have, we're going to, we're going to be able to select a good candidate.
Just put a little sign up on your calendar that the Casey C A Q meeting is on December 9th.
Or Ben the Bad Heart.
I think we want that first
Okay, I agree, but just in case you get moving into the next week, because we want the Casey C A people to come. They will, it's at night, they don't drive.
They call to Braverman letting us, sorry, but you know.
Yeah, I, yeah.
And then, the other thing, I might recommend putting a little, five minutes on the agenda to just firm up the, this discussion, you know, to
Next week, yeah.
And then also, to think about, I think that via the charter, the mayor actually does have a sort of authority to appoint people to committees, and so you might want to think about if you want to maybe create a small subcommittee of counselors to advise you on people that, I appreciate what Steve's saying, which is that too big of a group can get really unneillied, you can get, you're never going to Get the final name. So that's just something
Analysts? Okay, so it would need to be two other counselors?
Less than a quorum. Right. You could create a, essentially an advisory committee of, out of put together the panel, but it could be your decision ultimately.
Okay. So should we, is that something we should just put on the agenda, so that's what I would do next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you get that down.
Sure, yeah.
Good.
Bye. I
Not 10 o'clock yet.
I know, right? I believe we have gone through what we need to go through. Thank you all for All right.
Does someone want to move to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you say aye? Meeting adjourned. Uh, we do have to let, we do have to make copies.
Okay.
Public record.
Can I get five minutes of your time?